Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Mo Stunkel, Slate Camp, Forrest Chuck, Amelia Boyd, and Luke Amit. Commissioner Ben McGran is absent this evening. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will proceed with this evening's public hearing shortly, and we will go over all of the rules and procedures for the hearing. But I would like to make an initial announcement regarding public comment procedures as stated on the public comment signup form available at the table by the door. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to provide testimony. Also provided for on the form is an option for donating your time to another speaker. You may do so, but you must complete that portion of the form indicating to whom your time is donated. Also, you must be present at the time of that person's testimony. You will be called upon to confirm your presence before that individual testifies with your donated time. To accommodate those on Zoom who may wish to donate time, I will be calling on Zoom participants first. As I mentioned, I'll have additional instructions shortly, but I wanted to make everyone aware of that procedure upfront. Are there any other general announcements from the Commissioners or city staff? Hearing none. Next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 15th, 2022 meeting.
I'll move. Second.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. The final item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on a request for approval of the preliminary development plat City Application Number PPUD 21-0002. A proposed 49-lot residential planned unit development on four parcels. RPS 0082001004AA, RPS 0082002001AA, RSP 0082002010BA, and RPS 0082002009BA at the northwest corner of North Boyer and Ebbett Way totaling approximately 5.73 acres bounded by private property in the north, private property in Culvers Drive to the west, North Boyer Avenue to the east, and Ebbett Way to the souths. A notice of public hearing of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on March 15th, 2022. The order and procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. Explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Presentation by the applicant. Please note that Commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at this time. Opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Questions should be asked of those testifying at this time. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows: in favor, neutral, opposed. The applicant's rebuttal testimony, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Then we will close the public hearing, and the Commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed with questions directed only to city staff during deliberations. Before we proceed any further, I would like to ask for confirmation from each Commissioner, please, that you have had no ex parte contact and have no conflict of interest as pertains to this request. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let the Commission know that BCHA, Bonner Community Housing Agency, was a tenant of mine for three and a half years, or a little over three and a half years. But that won't in no way bias my opinion whatsoever.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will recuse myself at this point. I've got a long professional and personal history with the applicant. Step away from them.
Thank you.
None.
No.
No.
And neither do I. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton for an introduction of this request and explanation of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners. Again, this is a public hearing on a proposed plan unit development, preliminary development plan for Culvers Crossing. What is a planned unit development and why isn't being requested? A planned unit development is regulated by Section 10.3 of the Sandpoint City Code. A PUD is the development of land in which the standard land use regulations such as zoning may be modified or waived in order to promote beneficial development of an entire tract of land in conformance with an approved planned unit development permit, which accentuates usable open space recreational uses, public amenities, community housing, and harmonious development with surrounding properties and the city at large to achieve specific objectives. A PUD provides a trade-off between modifications of certain zoning regulations with additional requirements earlier in the process than a standard subdivision, such as identifying the open space, the amenities, and, sorry, some things. I got booted off. I will have to log back in. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you again. Sorry for the technical difficulty. Again, this is a public hearing on a proposed planned unit development, preliminary development plan for Culvers Crossing. Next slide, please. What is a planned unit development and why is it being requested? Regulated by Section 10.3 of the Sandpoint City Code, a PUD is the development of land in which the standard land use regulations such as zoning may be modified or waived in order to promote beneficial development of an entire tract of land in conformance with an approved planned unit development permit, which accentuates usable open space recreational uses, public amenities, community housing, and a harmonious development with surrounding properties and the city at large to achieve specific objectives. A PUD provides a trade-off between modifications of certain zoning regulations with additional requirements earlier in the process than a standard subdivision such as identifying the open space, the amenities, and the architectural details. Culvers Crossing is a residential subdivision that is seeking a PUD to develop the 5.7-acre parcel with modifications to the standard underlying RS single-family zoning district regulations to allow for a wider mix of housing. So, as I explained, a PUD is a little different than a standard subdivision. And the process starts where we are tonight, which is at the approval of a preliminary development plan and the hearing in action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The next step would be a public hearing by the Commission and recommendation to City Council on a final development plan and a preliminary plan that would then go to City Council for their action. Then the development infrastructure would be built. Then it would be a final plan, and then the building permits would be issued after that. That's the PUD process. The location of the subject property is at the northwest corner of North Boyer Avenue and Ebbett Way. And again, the underlying zoning is RS single-family, which allows single-two-and-three-unit structures, dwelling structures. The site plan that was included with the submittal materials shows the proposed streets through the subdivision, a mix of single-two-and-two, three, and four dwelling unit structures and a green belt and park space for the development indicated to meet the minimum 10% open space requirement. And unlike a just standard, if you had a subdivision in front of you, it wouldn't be identifying approximate building footprints and sidewalks. But this is the preliminary development plan that just has a little more detail than a standard subdivision at this point in the process. In addition, another differentiation from a standard subdivision is part of a PUD. At this point, the submittal includes the architectural style of the neighborhood. And these are examples of the two-unit and four-unit buildings in this development. And again, this is the preliminary development plan. And based on review of the development proposal to the PUD standards found in Sections 1033 through 1039, the proposal is requesting the following deviations. The first is a deviation from the RS district lots of less than 5,000 square feet and 50 feet in width, which falls under Section 9413A. The RS district buildings of more than three attached units that are in 9468. Less than 25-feet building line setback from all exterior boundaries along the north property line, as well as the parking and driveways less than 10 feet from the north property line. Those are both exceptions allowed by Section 1037E of the subdivision ordinance. RS district requirements of lots running a public street not less than 37.5 feet at the building front line and a 50-foot right-of-way for a portion of Culvers Lane. And again, that is an allowed deviation for a planned unit development in Section 10181. And in the review and in the proposed conditions, if a motion was to approve, specify some additional information that would be needed of the applicant at the time of final development plan. Based on the information provided, there's the two actions possible by the Commission. One is to take action on the preliminary plan, that is, to approve or deny after determination whether or not the plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of Title 10, Chapter 3. The proposed development advances the general welfare of the community and neighborhood, the benefits combination of various land uses and the interrelationship with land uses in the surrounding area, justify the deviation from standard district regulations, and the PDP meets the general standard criteria applicable to conditional use permits. So taking an action, whether to approve or deny, is one action before you. And the second option is to postpone action for no more than 60 days from this hearing. If there is specific additional information, the Commission feels they need to make a decision on the preliminary development plan. And just repeating what was in the staff report, the minimum approved conditions to be incorporated at the time of development plan, and these are the minimums. Clearly, the Commission may have additional conditions they would want to add. The first would be provide a traffic impact analysis and incorporate modifications as required by the city, if any. Provide clarification on usability of the open space along Ebbett Way. Provide development and amenity details on the community park parcel, as well as CCNRs with clear maintenance responsibilities. Revise the plan to incorporate the additional seven-foot green belt along the west side of lots 26 through 31 and adjust lot sizes accordingly. Revise to incorporate sidewalks along North Boyer and Culvers Drive as required by Title 7 to achieve non-motorized connectivity. Provide setbacks, total lot coverage of all structures, and additional building side details to ensure requirements of Section 9413E are met or that any requested deviations are specified. And ensure the parking and driveways of lots 510, 1146 meet the minimum 10-foot setback requirement unless the setback requirement is waived by the planning commission through the allowance in Section 1037E. And finally, provide a narrative addressing the conditional use permit criteria. And then this, we'll just put this slide up again during the public hearing process, just to remind the public of the process you will be going through. But that is the presentation I have.
Do the Commissioners have any questions for staff at this time? I have, I have a couple. Just in an earlier drawing, when I was looking at some of the stuff that had been sent us earlier, there was something that was identified as the big house. Is the big house the same as the four unit, or what was the big house? I didn't see it on your plan now, but I saw it earlier.
The big houses are the three-and-four-unit structures.
Okay. And what is to the north of this property now, where we're considering changing the setback requirements? Is that undeveloped land at this point?
There are some structures on the property, but it is also owned by the property owner of the proposed development.
And the sidewalks on Culver Drive, is that on both sides or one side of the street?
Would be on the side of the development only.
But I thought that, isn't that the road that goes through the development, or am I?
It would be Culvers Drive. There's Culvers Lane goes through the development, and that's already showing sidewalks on both sides.
Excellent. And then the one other thing, which are, if you can go back to the plat and show me, what are lots 510, 11, and 46, the ones?
The ones, let's see, 510, 11, and I said four, I believe. It was these along the north property line.
Those are the ones on the north? Okay. That's all my questions. Does anybody have any others?
I do. Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Amy, so we can modify or waive zoning or standard land use regulations, but not with code, correct? So if there's an issue that comes up with code, say the sidewalks, we cannot waive that or disregard that city code, correct?
The sidewalks do not fall under zoning, so that is why that is not allowed waiver through this process.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions? All set. All right. If there are no additional questions, I will now recite the hearing rules and procedures for both the public and also for those presenting this evening. Please note that, as provided in the notice of public hearing and as stated within the meeting packet posted on the city website, all written comments are to be delivered to the city clerk. Those comments that were received by way of that stated procedure were either included in the meeting packet or, if received in time prior to the meeting, were forwarded to the Commissioners. This process must be followed to ensure comments are properly included in the permanent hearing record. I would like to ask for your attention at this time, please, as I recite the standards for public testimony as well as the applicant's presentation during this evening's public hearing. Testimony shall directly address the subject at hand. Testimony shall not be personally derogatory towards any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities are for comment only. Do not direct any questions to the Commission or to staff. In the interest of time, testimony shall not be repetitious, and each speaker is allotted no more than three minutes. If your testimony fails to comply with these standards, it may be declared out of order, and you will be asked to cease. Those here in the chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a signup form and hand it to the clerk. Do not approach the dais. The forms are available on the table by the door. Those on Zoom will also have an opportunity to speak. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the Commission. Disruptive behavior, including clapping, disruptive noises, and comments or exclamations from the audience. With that, I will now yield the floor to the applicant's presentation. If the applicant's representative will please step to the podium and introduce yourself.
Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Rob Hart. I'm the Executive Director of the Bonner Community Housing Agency, and I am very happy to be here tonight. First, I'd like to thank Amy and her staff for their helpful guidance. Second, I'd like to thank Scott and Russell of Sewell Engineering, Matt and Dante of Selkirk Design, Marty of AJ Construction, Jake of Sunray Enterprises, and Lisa of Sandpoint Law Group, all of whom helped us get here tonight. But most of all, I'd like to thank Nancy Hadley. Because without her care for this community, you would not be reviewing the first-of-its-kind affordable housing project here in Sandpoint. I will be speaking on her behalf tonight, but if you have any questions for her directly, she is here. Before I go any further, I want to apologize directly to the Commissioners for suggesting that supporters might raise their hands. I've done this successfully in other places to save time, but I understand it's not appropriate here. And instead, the cards will be handed out to people who may wish to show support or to speak, so. I have with us a stack of 34 letters of support that were entered into the record last week. The mayors of Dover and Ponderay, local police chiefs, the Vice President of Tomlinson Sotheby's, the President of the American Planning Association, have all written their support for creating quality homes that locals can afford. Unfortunately, those letters are not referenced in your staff report, but I hope you get a chance to read them. I don't need to tell you that we have a housing crisis. We see it every day with businesses closing, residents being displaced, even chairless, not operating. Anyone who has attended the Mayor's Task Force on Workforce Housing knows that the number-one question is, what can we do to provide affordable housing for our residents? Hopefully, we'll be discussing answers to that question tonight. Culvers Crossing is a collaboration of second-generation native Nancy Hadley and the Bonner Community Housing Agency. That collaboration means that many of the proposed homes will be covered by the agency's local housing program. Those homes will be reserved for local employees, seniors, and the disabled. These homes, and that will be on an income-restricted basis. Home prices in the program are set by a formula based on local income. The formula is designed so that buyers only spend 30% of their income on their housing. As a point of reference, we have over 100 local employees signed up for the first phase of 13 homes. Let's look at this another way. If you're wealthy, investor, or speculator, don't contact us. But if you have two people in your household who make $15 an hour or more, you have good credit, not much down payment, and some consumer debt, then you could qualify to buy the homes that we're showing you here today. Culvers Crossing is coming to you as a planned unit development or PUD to provide benefits to both the landowner and to the community. The PUD format helps Nancy get a variety of home types to serve those who have been shut out of the housing market. We have some lots that are smaller than allowed under RS zoning and some lots that are much larger than allowed. But overall, our density does not exceed the RS zoning limit. You may hear and read some objections to our plans, but I want to emphasize Culvers Crossing does not exceed the current allowed density. The PUD format allows us to cluster density, and in return, we can create a large community park. Originally, this was going to be a dedicated city park, but concerns from city staff and the requirements of the PUD had led us to change that to an open space for residents. You can see from the site plan that we are not clear-cutting the site. I think I'm going to say that again. We are not clear-cutting the site. Instead, we did a tree survey and hired a forester to inventory all the trees on the property. We have a tree preservation plan to save as many as possible. That means that there will be mature hazelnut and apple trees alongside 100-foot-tall Engelmann spruce on move-in day. You'll notice that our streets are nonlinear. These curves help slow down traffic to make it safer neighborhood for families. There are a variety of home types. All have attractive four-sided architecture. This means that you won't see flat, blank sidewalls. Instead, there are dormers, trellises, corbels, and other architectural features on all four sides of every home. The yellow home, in answer to the Commissioner John Hastings' question, the yellow homes on our site plan are the big houses. Each one is a group of three or four townhomes, each one different, and each one forming a part of what looks like one big home. But there are no shared walls. Each home has its own exterior walls, and these are not condominiums. You have a front yard and a backyard. You own the land below and the sky above. Another benefit of the PUD format is that the big houses are served by alleys. And this means you don't see garage doors as you drive by. Our site plan also shows a green belt along North Boyer and Culvers Drive to protect trees and preserve the experience as you pass the site. These open space easements require that existing trees must remain, and six-foot-high solid fencing is prohibited. We have submitted a traffic report that shows Culvers Crossing at full buildout will only generate 25 trips during peak hour spread between two intersections. That's one car every five minutes if everyone drives. But Culvers Crossing is only one mile from the mall, one mile from downtown. Farm and Elementary is an easy walk, and City Beach is a comfortable bike ride along Sand Creek. So not all trips are going to be by car. Our full traffic study is due shortly, and we will follow its recommendations. Here is a quote from its author, David Evans and Associates, quote, "I don't see anything coming out of our traffic study that will affect your site plan," unquote. We are aware that some object to Culvers Crossing, and you may hear from those people tonight. But I think you'll find that Amy's staff report addresses all of the objections. And her staff report does an excellent job of describing the deviations to the RS zoning And her staff report does an excellent job of describing the deviations to the RS zoning that the PUD format allows us to ask for. So let's go back to the original question. What can we do to provide affordable housing for our residents? The answer is to approve these deviations as allowed under the PUD format. This allows us to save the trees, provide a community park, attractive architecture, nonlinear streets, alley-loaded homes, and affordable housing. So it's a win-win situation. Then, can I be happy to answer any questions?
Commissioners, have questions? Of the applicant?
I do, of course, but if anyone else.
I noticed, hi, Rob, how are you? Thanks for your presentation. I had noticed on the plan that, and to your description of Culvers Crossing, the lot sizes of some of the the home sites, I was just curious what the lot size of the big houses were.
They, you mean the individual units of the big houses, they range from about thirty-five hundred square feet, and the single-family homes are up around seven thousand square feet, six to seven. So the, and the big house ones, I think, are like in the three to four thousand square feet per unit. And one of the conditions of approval is that we have to print the actual square footage of every lot on, on the final development plan. So when it comes back to you, you will have that information. And then we also have to calculate the coverage of every lot, because as you can see, we have a building designated for each of the smaller lots. And so we'll have to calculate that and come back to that. That's one of the conditions.
And then the full traffic analysis, I know you have the letter about traffic flow, but.
That was ordered, originally, we submitted a traffic generation letter, and we said, hey, the first three phases don't have any impact at all. But at the fourth phase, then we have to do a traffic study, because then we get over three hundred trips. The city, through its review, said, you know what? We want to see everything now. So we then, during the middle of this process, we ordered that. It takes a long time. It's almost done, but it was not done in time for this hearing, and certainly not in time to get into your packet. So we're going to have to present that at the next hearing.
Okay.
But that was the quote that I just gave you from its author, saying, you may see some stop signs and some no-left-turn signs and things like that, but you won't see a change to the lot layout that you see in front of you.
Gotcha. And then the community park that used to be slated for city park, so it's going to be a community park, and that's for residents only, or is that going to be available for the community of Sandpoint?
Good question. It is maintained by the homeowners association, so we're responsible for maintaining it. That was one of the issues was city maintenance, and how do you get the equipment in and parking and all that, so. Whether it's open to the public or not, we have not considered that yet.
So there will be CCNRs?
Oh, yes. You'll have those. That's a condition of approval for our next meeting. We have actually already prepared them. They're being reviewed right now, so that will come to you, and it will describe both the community park and what's called the shared driveways. I call them the alleys, but those are shared driveways. And there is a twenty-foot easement down the center of each one, and so the homeowners association is responsible for snow removal on those driveways.
Okay. And then last and final question is about sidewalks. Because I know you had mentioned the green belt, you wanted to preserve those trees, but despite that, there's still Title VII of the city code.
Yes, well, the, on the east side of Boyer is a very popular multi-use trail that is connected to all sorts of, the whole trail system, basically. And we had proposed that we would do crosswalks over to that. And then through the approval process, the city said, no, this is not something that is negotiable. You need to put in a sidewalk. We were hoping that this would be an open space area without a sidewalk. What happens is with each of these conditions of approval that come in beyond what we originally submitted, it affects the affordability of the homes, frankly. That's what happens, is we're running a very tight ship here, and things very tightly balanced. And so the city says, well, we'd like you to put in a sidewalk, and that's fifty thousand dollars. We're a nonprofit. That goes straight to the homebuyers. The developer doesn't pay for that. The homebuyers pay. So we understand, we're trying to get a project approved here. And so we are, I guess you could say we're conceding that, but we had a reason that we didn't want to put them in. And the other side on Culvers Drive, very deep drainage ditches along the side of Culvers Drive, and there is an exception that's allowed for that, and we will be addressing that when we get to the site improvement plans, when we see whether a sidewalk is even feasible along there because of the drainage ditches.
And then I just wanted to make a comment. I read the Culvers Crossing and then your income-based local housing program. I can mend BCHA for for spearheading that. I do, in reading everything, there was two homes that are going to be under the, what is the Idaho?
Idaho Housing and Finance Home Program.
Yes, so there's going to be two, so then the other forty-seven will be under your, your program.
So the goal is to have a minimum of sixty percent of the homes on this project be covered by our local housing program. We've won an award for what you just mentioned. Whether we use it or not is another question, because the requirements of the Idaho Housing and Finance Association are not only that the buyer qualifies as a low-income buyer, but also the workers have to qualify. And twenty-five percent of the workers have to be low-income workers. It's a very high bar to ask local subs to track all their hours ahead of time and during the project for every sub on every unit, and also ask everybody what their income is. So we'll see how that goes. We're going to try to make it work, but we're in negotiations with IHFA right now.
Gotcha. So about nineteen to twenty of those homes will be not within the program?
It will be up to Nancy to do whatever she wants. A lot of it comes down to construction costs and interest rates and all that. We can't predict what's going to happen. We'd like to do as much as we can for the community, but this is a privately funded project. This is not subsidized housing. And so it's very tightly tied to how much it costs to build a home.
Yeah, because the interest rates now are like four point.
They're going up.
Three-nine or nine-six-six, I believe.
And as I said, it's a tight project, so as costs go up, we have to reserve some homes that may not be under our program.
Thank you for answering my questions. Mr. Chairman, I'm finished.
Thank you. So, I guess, are all the proposed homes here going to fall under the thirty percent of income, including they're the single-family lots as well as the historic home? Is that also going to be a for-sale thing, or somebody already living there, or?
So I have the same answer for you that I had for Commissioner Boyd, and that is that our goal is to have a minimum of sixty percent of the homes covered by our program. At this stage, because we're talking about not even delivering them until next year. So it's very hard to predict what construction costs, interest rates are going to do. But that's Nancy's commitment is to have a minimum of sixty percent. That is, whether the single-family homes and the twin homes will fall in that area, we can't tell you at this point. And all we're doing right now, while we're asking for approval of the entire PUD, we're only going to be building the first thirteen homes in the first phase. So that will be all you see, and that's all we're even talking to people about, is the first thirteen. And so that's, as you can see up there, lots one through thirteen. The other stuff is down the road.
Do the commissioners have any additional questions for the applicant before we proceed with the public hearing?
I do have one more question. Sorry, I forgot to ask. I had read in the literature, I saw two numbers. The homes, there's a restriction from the owners to sell the homes. Is it two years or four years that they have to wait?
So in, when we first put together the local housing program, we had deed restriction of two years. In talking with our team of lawyers and lenders and all that, everybody felt it was better to use the right-of-first refusal format. So there are no deed restrictions on the local housing program. The right-of-first refusal is that the landowner has the right to buy your home back at what you paid for it, plus the Consumer Price Index in the first two years. And in years three and four, she has the right to buy it back at what you paid, plus double the Consumer Price Index. And on the first day of year five, you're free to do whatever you want. So it is a four-year period of affordability. So we doubled, we took away the deed restriction, which makes it simpler for title and lending and financing and all that kind of stuff. And then we doubled the period of affordability. So I think it's a really good improvement.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Hart, does that transfer, if that was to sell within the four-year timer, that goes back to Ms. Hadley?
That's up to her. Yes, I mean, that's, that's the idea, is that then the formula would come back into play. Let's say four years from now, incomes have gone up a little bit, and so we do our little calculation and say, okay, what was three hundred thousand is now three hundred and twenty-five, or whatever the numbers are. But the idea is to keep them affordable as long as we can.
Thank you.
Sorry. So the area median income, and that is based on this 2020 census, or is that based on something else?
We use the Idaho Housing and Finance Association 2021 area median income for Bonner County. And this is specifically for Bonner County. It's updated every year, and we've been tracking it for years. And so it goes up, right now, income is going up about four point four percent per year. And that means home prices, they just kind of track that, because they're set by formula. And so you might, you might expect that homes that are in future phases will follow that, that trend, unless income goes down. But we use the state numbers, which actually come through HUD.
I swear, that's it.
Question, minute. There are no further questions from the commissioners. We're now prepared to proceed to the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Wonderful job. For those participating on Zoom, when your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute. Then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. The clerk will now lower all hands on Zoom in order to take testimony in the order previously stated. If you wish to speak in favor, are neutral, or in opposition, and I will make a call for each, then you may raise your hand at that time. Just a reminder, in the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Each speaker will be allotted up to three minutes. And the public hearing is now open. We'll begin with those who are participating remotely. If you are participating on Zoom and wish to testify in favor of this request, please raise your hand at this time.
I do have one hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin Weber? Mr. Weber, one moment. Mr. Chairman, we appear to be having an audio difficulty.
Okay, shall we proceed with the room and come back to Zoom?
We can try that. Mr. Weber? We'll call upon you shortly.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Please proceed. Mr. Weber? Mr. Chairman, I believe.
Yeah, I was thinking this was a I was thinking this was a show of hands. I didn't want to testify in favor. I was, I was thinking he was looking for a show of hands.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, no other hands raised online at this time.
Thank you. We will now recognize those in the room who wish to testify in favor. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first speaker to the podium?
Lisa Moline?
I don't think I'm going to speak. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I reserve my right, but I think I'm going to pass.
Thank you.
Brad Hanson?
Here?
Yes.
My name is Brad Hanson. I'm a resident of the city of Sandpoint, and I'm here to talk in favor of the proposal. I want to just say, as a background, that I've spent twenty-five years as a home builder in Boundary County, and also ten years as a planning and zoning commissioner for the city of Bonners Ferry. I've seen a lot of proposals come down the pike for subdivisions and various housing developments, and I've seen a lot of attempts at these sorts of things over the course of the years. And I say I'm extremely impressed with the job that these folks have done. I've had a chance over the last couple of weeks to look at their documents, to ask some questions about many of the things that were spoken of tonight. And I'm just very impressed with what they have put forward. It's a measured response. It's not looking at, it's approaching a very huge problem that I think is very acute. I spent thirty-four years living in Boundary County, and now I've been down here about two and a half years. And I can tell you, just from that perspective, that a problem for affordable housing is an issue there in Boundary County. It's much more acute here in Bonner County. And it, to have a chance to see somebody like this come up here and make a stab at a partial solution, and limiting their scope, and dotting their i's, and crossing their t's, and making sure that they're going in a methodical way is just, I find it a fantastic proposal. I encourage the commission to support this sorts of activity, and these folks in particular, I think they've done a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may ask, Carissa Lozero, Los Ososero, are you in favor, neutral, or opposed to this proposal?
Did.
No, I'm sorry.
No, not at the end. We were just, it wasn't.
We're organizing my forms. Thank you.
It wasn't clarified on the form you turned in earlier, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As far as those who signed up in the room, that is the only form that I have from someone who was in favor. Would you like to check back online?
Yes, is there anyone else? Well, is there anyone else in Zoom or here in the room who wishes to speak in favor? No. We'll now move on to those who are neutral on this proposal. If you are participating on Zoom and wish to testify as neutral, please raise your hand. Having none, is there, we'll now recognize those in the room who wish to testify as neutral. Madam Clerk, is there anyone here who signed in the chambers who wishes to testify as neutral?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We will, finally, we'll hear from those who are opposed to this request. If you are participating on Zoom and wish to testify as opposed, would you please raise your hand?
I do not see any hands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll now recognize those in the room who wish to testify in opposition. Madam Clerk, is there anyone here in the chambers who wishes to testify who is opposed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There were several city residents who signed up that they wished to speak, but to donate their time to another speaker.
Okay.
I just wanted to check that they. I just wanted to check that they are present. Simon Baker. Kathy Baker. Micah Snyder. So with those three plus Karen Bishop is going to speak on their behalf as well as her allotted time. All told, she will have 12 minutes to speak.
Okay. Yes, now, yes, we are.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Karen Bishop. I own at 1618 Culver's Drive, Sandpoint, Idaho. This directly impacts my property and my home. I am here representing my husband, myself, and neighbors, which those able to attend have signed up and given me their time, so I am very thankful. We are strongly opposed to the proposition, proposed Culvers Crossing PPUD 21-002. We turned in a seven-page written technical explanation and tonight I will state our opposition on a more factual level without all the codes and technical terminology. As for the stormwater plan that was allowed to be added to the incomplete application after the hearing date had already been set, we need drainage calculations. There is a substantial amount of standing water on proposed property that could potentially flood out the adjoining properties. Even though the GIS map does not show wetlands on proposed property, due to the excessive standing water, we strongly request a wetland study be conducted. There are additional wetlands located on the University Park property when a study was performed, which is located in very close proximity of the proposed Culvers Crossing property. Their improvised stormwater plan takes out the green belt. They were proposing in place of the sidewalks, which brings me to no sidewalks. Not only is it city code to have sidewalks, we are concerned for any person who may live there. As without sidewalks, they will not be able to navigate the area safely. Please enforce the code for sidewalks. The setbacks. We see no setbacks. Looks like one of the waivers they would require is no setbacks. We are very against such a waiver to be allowed in our area. The zoning on proposed property is current RS residential, single family. For this PUD to be allowed, there would have to be substantial waivers such as lot size, dwelling units per building, setbacks, increased density, deviation on driveway width, et cetera, which requires certain requirements be met. We ask that requirements are met and based on the comprehensive plan and city code. We do not see where preliminary plat standards have been met. One of the requirements to meet standard is that such plat must be on forms required by city and signed by the owner of record. Dimensions of all lots shall be shown. At this time, we do not see a plat map fulfilling these requirements. They are requesting no traffic impact analysis until fourth phase. This should not be allowed. The traffic impact analysis should be mandatory prior to plat approval. Streets that will be strongly impacted are small, such as Culvers Drive currently only has a surface of 23 and a half feet. The idea of crosswalks on Boyer is very concerning for safety reasons. We believe the traffic impact study would properly guide them how this might be able to be addressed to meet code and address our safety concerns. To be more informed, we need actual dimensions of lots and all buildings. These dimensions will help to understand if the code on previous surface calculations are being met along with the code on common open space. On January 13th, 2022, there was a preliminary development plan completeness review. This gave Mr. Hart from January 13th to 20, January 13th, 2022, until March 8th, 2022, approximately two months to correct and complete the application before hearing date was set. However, he was allowed to enter a stormwater plan and change the narrative for the, after the hearing date was set. We, as affected landowners, were given only approximately two weeks to read study and get properly informed. The allowing an updated narrative, adding a stormwater plan and possibly other changes we have not caught strongly affect our ability to do our due diligence on this matter. Due to the incomplete and changing application, we strongly request this application be denied and sent back for complete, compliant, and factual reapplication. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have others wishing to testify in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Carissa Lozero.
So as I was reading the, the documents list on the city website for this PUD, it says the eligibility for buying these homes is being a citizen with a quote-unquote "good job" that benefits the community. And on previous documents that I've seen for this proposed development in the past, it's mentioned a citizen in quote-unquote "good standing" in the community and I want, who is making the decision on who gets this housing and who is a citizen in quote-unquote "good standing" in the community? Because if that is the the way that you are going to be approved to get a spot on in this development, that seems like that it could be a slippery slope and potentially lead to discrimination. So just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Madam Clerk, do we have others?
Mr. Chairman, I am not aware of anyone else who wishes to speak either in the room or online. But I do have some numbers for you. I'd like to convey for those who did complete a form and didn't wish to speak, but they did want to convey their support for the proposal. There were 40 city residents who conveyed that support and 12 folks who are here who do not reside within city limits who conveyed support as well.
And any similar sort of numbers for opposition?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not had an opportunity to do so? Do the commissioners have any additional questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, do we get to ask questions to staff? Do we get to ask questions?
We'll have an opportunity for that later as well. Thank you.
Rebuttal by the applicant.
Correct, yes, yep. And with the applicant care to offer a rebuttal to any of the testimony, please be aware that if any new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public must be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and zoning commission. And I want to thank the people who spoke in opposition because they give me an opportunity to address some important matters. First of all, though, I want to say that the affordable housing being offered by Nancy Hadley is voluntary. She's not being forced to do this. This is done out of her care for the community. There were comments early on about citizen in good standing. This was an error on our part and we have since changed the documents about that because we now work very closely with Intermountain Fair Housing. And they have vetted our documents and told us what we can say and what we can't say. And that was one of the things that we couldn't say. And so that was about a year ago, maybe or so, that we were using those phrases and we're not using them anymore. And I'm glad that came up. Regarding the storm drainage plan, that's also a good point. We submitted the storm drainage plan that you have in your packet. We submitted that with our original application at the very beginning. And I think you had a change in city engineers and that document got kind of misplaced. And so it was put on a, we need this document, but we had already submitted it. We had a meeting with the city. They go, oh, yes, there it is. You're right. So that has not changed at all since the very beginning. And detailed drainage can, calculations generally come at a later stage, which we're obviously going to do that required to provide you a stormwater management plan. There were comments about the plat not having certain dimensions on it. We're, we're not asking for approval for the plat yet. We have submitted a preliminary plat because the traffic isn't done. The staff has said, we're not ready to review the plat and you're not reviewing the plat tonight. So by the time it gets in front of you, you'll have all of the dimensions that were mentioned by Karen Bishop. The deviations from RS zoning that we are asking you to approve are not unusual. In fact, they are typical and have been granted in the past. Just because we have some affordable housing in this project does not mean it doesn't meet the standard PUD format. Unless there are any further questions, I would like to ask that the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission approve the preliminary PUD for Culvers Crossing. Thank you.
And before you step away, do commissioners have any final questions for the applicant?
I just have one question. Actually, it's two. The fencing on Boyer, you made a comment earlier that there would be no six-foot fence. Does that mean there is restrictions in there from fences, period?
The way the, we have submitted an open space criteria to staff. And what that says is fences up to three feet in height that are open rail, such as a horse-type fence, would be allowed. But not what's going on across the street, which is the six-foot-high solid fence. We're, we're trying to recognize that issue and say, let's keep trees on our side and keep that open. The other requirement in there is that the, anything to do with the trees that remain has to be done with the, with the approval of an arborist. You can't just go in there and cut down trees.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, in regard to the sidewalk, for the lack of a sidewalk in the plan, several people mentioned that what I see is the possibility of somebody having to cross the road to get the wider sidewalk to go down to get to the end if they still wanted to, therefore having to cross the road twice.
I, yes, that was
I don't know how restrictive trespassing would be on the lots that cross the length of the property. Maybe it would be accepted, but that would be an assumption.
Right now, the way the staff report stands is that there is a condition of approval for us to install a sidewalk. That sidewalk is on city property. And we, having told you what the impact of that is, which I did in my response to Commissioner Boyd, as long as you understand that impact, then we are willing to concede that condition of approval. In fact, I have not objected to any of the conditions of approval. We accept all of them. And that's why I think if you look at the staff report plus the conditions of approval that addresses all of the objections from the opposition.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
So if sidewalks were put in on Boyer, then trees are going to be removed, right? And that is
We're worried about that. We think what happened when Nancy put in her sidewalk at the corner of northwest corner of North Boyer and Yebit Way, if you go look at that, you can see it on the Google Earth, it had to move around a little bit to avoid trees. In any event, they're going to be covering up tree roots and being very close to some beautiful specimen trees. We just have to try to do the best we can and ask, ask our site work guys not to dig too deep. But that, that was our big concern is the trees, the beautiful trees that along that road and us trying to preserve that. And, but I understand your point about the two crosswalks. Yeah, it's it's a concern also.
Well, I would imagine that in this neighborhood potentially could be children, dogs, a lot of traffic, not a good mix, but
Well, we recognize that North Boyer is, is going to even further in the future be more of a primary arterial. And it's not just our project. There are other projects going on. In fact, I think you're going to find that North Boyer is about to be widened as a result of University Place. So we don't want to be the one people who are saying, oh, no, we're not going to be a part of that. We want to follow the rules. So we're trying to show, we're trying to chart a path here that says that it is possible to build affordable housing and follow the rules. And that's why we're, we're sort of conceding that if we have to, if that's where we end up, we're conceding that. We're not objecting to that condition of approval at this point.
Okay. Thank you again.
Commissioners, anything else? Was there anything, thank you. Was there anything in that that would be considered new facts and opportunity for? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Question, and this may be for our legal counsel. I know the public hearing has not yet been closed. There's a member of the public who's raised their hand on Zoom.
Oh, on Zoom. Okay. Yes, let's allow that testimony.
Give me just a moment to pull up the Kristin Harriman.
I think it's working. Yes, no?
Yes, we're hearing you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I just want to clarify and make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Because I have kids. If I was to get into one of these places, are they, is it being said that I cannot put up a fence that could potentially keep other animals out of my yard or make sure that it's safe for my kids? Because I'm understanding it, it's a
Excuse me, just modify, if I may interrupt. This is a time for comment only, not for questions.
Okay, never mind then.
Thank you. So the public hearing is now closed. At this time, the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberations. Do commissioners have any questions for staff at this time?
I believe my question is for Ms. Tweeden. Could you give me any clarification in regards to Title VII and sidewalks and how that can be navigated? So there's fairness to the potential of Culvers Crossing in regards to the other city residents who have invested in sidewalks. How does that work? I'm looking at, I've seen recently, let me scroll my map down. On East Mountain View Road, there is a potential, there's a development coming in and we've required them to have sidewalks. Title VII requires that by city code.
Correct. I think I can address that for you.
Pardon me.
Okay, Commissioner. So I think some of the confusion is that the approval of a planned unit development which allows for these deviations is for deviation from zoning code only. It's not going to allow deviation from the remainder of city code. So when the applicant goes through the site review process and then the final site planning, there is going to be lots of input from the city with regards to additional city codes that are, are just required of them, that there's not an opportunity for deviation from that just because this is a PUD. So Title VII is one of those code sections.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a short answer for that?
Only deviations from zoning code, not from anything else. Is that short enough?
Yep. I have a question kind of relating to some of the testimony that's come up. City staff, if you could address the issue that's come up with the wetland study that had been completed, even though it's not anywhere on the conditions, has that been completed to city staff's satisfaction?
Stormwater.
Pardon? Stormwater runoff. That's what I meant. Stormwater runoff, yeah.
The application has, as part of the PDP process, submitted a preliminary stormwater plan. And when this moves to plat approval, that eventually we will have a full stormwater management plan developed as part of this with calculations. But as of right now, it's just a preliminary plan.
And I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to answer, ask it anyway. Is there any kind, with the sidewalk issue, is there any kind of opportunity within the code to make that sidewalk elevated, to have less impact on? Like, and I think comes to my mind is boardwalk as something to make it less impactful on the existing trees. Is there anything?
I, we'd have to look into it, but you clearly have to meet American with Disabilities Act for sidewalk construction. So I don't know that a boardwalk would for sidewalk construction, so I don't know that a boardwalk would work.
Okay.
But again, it is, you know, looking at how we can have a win-win with protecting some trees while having sidewalk is something we can work with applicants on if it is a sidewalk that curves a little bit. But we understand what their intent was, but again, through the PUD process, that's not something that can be deviated.
Commissions. I just have one. On page one of the staff report, there's some language in there that says, as stated in Sandpoint Code ten-three dash one, a PUD is the development of land in which the standard land use regulations, e.g. zoning, may be modified or waived. Which one is it, or is it both?
Those are kind of two words for the same thing, modifying or waiving or requirement.
So we don't lean one way or the other on it? Modified or waived in definition?
I'll give you an example of, in the conditions of approval, or the request is to not have a full twenty-five-foot perimeter buffer. That is a part of the PUD requirement. But then there's a waiver in there that the commission may look at a certain site and have less than twenty-five feet. So that's kind of waiving what the, the stated requirement is. Whereas a modification is more of a change, say, of the lot size, minimum lot size.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That's it.
Chairman.
Yes.
If the affordability nature was removed from this proposal, would it change anything as far as the PUD nature of it?
I don't understand your question, and you're looking.
Does, does the affordability portion bear at all with our decision?
There are likely a few aspects when you look at it in comparison to your comprehensive plan, where the affordability aspect comes into play. But with regards to the technical nature of the preliminary in principle approval of a PUD, no.
Okay. So long-term, ten years from now, this proposal could look the same whether with this application is exactly the way it is, or an application that was just for a strict PUD that had no, no, no affordability aspect to it.
That's correct. The affordable housing aspect of this is being offered voluntarily by the landlord. It's not being governed or regulated by the city in any way.
Okay, so the comp plan is probably the only part that we would take into consideration for the affordability part of it. And that would have no bearing, or could that have bearing on sidewalks and fences and setbacks?
The affordability aspect?
Yeah. In, in relation to the comp plan?
No.
Yeah.
But that's for you to evaluate. You've been provided with the nine elements essentially. The deviations that have been requested.
Thank you.
Any further deliberation, commissioners? Is anyone prepared to make a motion on this preliminary plat? It will come before us again as a final plat with some of these questions being.
Preliminary development plan.
Preliminary, preliminary development plan. Thank you very much, not plat. Yes. So this is preliminary. We'll have another chance to look at this with some of these issues then addressed. Does anybody feel ready to make the motion?
Let me finish my writing, and I may. There's, there's a lot of words on this page.
Yes, there is.
Amy, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I do, I asked you this earlier. There's that twenty-foot shared driveway, and that does meet fire and safety standards.
That will need to meet fire and safety code, correct?
It will need to. So the twenty-foot feet does not at this time, or?
I believe it does, but that gets evaluated as we get to the plat process.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Sandpoint Planning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve the preliminary development plan submitted by Bonner County Bonner Community Housing Agency for the property known as parcels RPS zero-zero-eight-two-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-four-A-A, and RPS zero-zero-eight-two-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-nine-B-A, located in Section fifteen, Township fifty-seven, North, Range two West, subject to the following conditions that shall be incorporated into the final development plan and preliminary plat. Number one, to complete the traffic impact analysis and incorporate modifications as required by the city, if any. Two, provide any necessary clarification on usability of the open space along Ebbett Way. Three, to provide development and amenity details on the community park parcel, as well as CCRs, CC and Rs, with clear maintenance responsibilities. Five, revise to incorporate sidewalks along North Boyer Avenue and Culvers Drive as required by Title VII to achieve non-motorized connectivity. Six, provide setbacks, total lot coverage of all structures, and any additional building facade details to ensure requirements of nine dash four dash one dash three E or met, or to specify any additional requested deviations. And number eight, to provide a narrative addressing the conditional use permit criteria.
Mr. Chairman, did you mean to include numbers four and seven?
You deleted a couple. Did you mean to do that?
I did.
Okay. Just checking. Yep.
This motion, and that can be discussed afterwards. This motion is based on review of the findings in the staff report, submitted materials, and public comment and determination that be preliminary development plan is consistent with the purpose of Title ten, Chapter ten, because it meets the following objectives.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification is that Title ten, Chapter ten, Commissioner, or Title ten, Chapter?
Oh, pardon me. Title ten, Chapter three. Thank you. Meets the requirements as found in Sandpoint City Code. Advances the general welfare of the community and neighborhood, provides benefits, a combination of various land uses and the interrelationship with the land uses of the surrounding area to justify the requested deviations from the standard zoning regulations, and satisfies the conditional use criteria two through two, three, five, six, and eight of nine dash nine dash six dash three. And further, based on the finding that staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to planned unit developments contained in the Idaho Code sixty-seven dash six-five-one-two and Sandpoint City Code, Title nine, Chapter nine.
Do I have a second?
Can I ask a commissioner why you left out one? Or one, one at a time?
The motion will fail without a second, and you can, somebody else can start over.
If there is no second, the motion fails. Correct. Do we have any other motions willing to be made?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move the Sandpoint Planning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approves a preliminary development plan submitted by Bonner Community Housing Agency, site plan dated two-twenty-eight-twenty-two, for the property known as parcels RPS zero-zero-eight-two-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-four-A-A, RPS zero-zero-eight-two-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-one-A-A, RPS zero-zero-eight-two-zero-zero-zero-two-zero, sorry, two-zero-one-zero-B-A, and RPS zero-zero-eight-two-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-nine-B-A, located in Section fifteen, Township fifty-seven, North, Range two West, subject to the following conditions that shall be incorporated into the final development plan and preliminary plat. Number one, provide traffic impact analysis and incorporate modifications as required by the city, if any. Number two, provide clarification on usability of the open space along Ebbett Way. Number three, provide development and amenity details on the community park parcel, as well as CC and Rs, with clear maintenance responsibilities. Number four, revise plan to incorporate the additional seven-foot green belt along the west side of lots twenty-six through thirty-one and adjust lot sizes accordingly. Number five, revise to incorporate sidewalks along North Boyer Avenue and Culvers Drive as required by Title VII to achieve non-motorized connectivity. Number six, provide setbacks, total lot coverage of all structures, and additional building facade details to ensure requirements of nine dash four dash three, one dash three E are met or specify any requested deviations. Number seven, ensure the parking and driveways of lots five, ten, eleven, forty-six meet the minimum ten-foot setback requirements of ten dash three dash seven C. Eight, provide the narrative, a narrative addressing the conditional use permit criteria. Do I have to read the rest, too? Yes.
I think so.
Okay. This motion is based on review of the findings in the staff report, submitted materials, and public comment and determination that the PDP, A, is consistent with the intent and purpose of Title ten, Chapter three, because it meets the following objectives, which are stated in our packet of the staff report. B, advances the general welfare of the community and neighborhood. C, provides benefits, a combination of various land uses and the interrelationship with the land uses of the surrounding area to justify the requested deviations from the standard zoning regulations, and satisfies the conditional use criteria two through nine of nine dash nine dash six dash three H. And further, based on the finding that one staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to PUDs contained in Idaho Code sixty-seven dash six-five-one-two and Sandpoint City Code, Title nine, Chapter nine.
That motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
Then we'll take a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner, oh, sorry, Commissioner Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Hastings?
Aye.
Commissioner Amit?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Aye.
The motion passes. And with no further business before the commission this evening, we will now adjourn at six fifty-nine PM.